Okay, good evening. We're back for a discussion by the commission. Normally at this point I just kind of throw it open for free for all, but this is a pretty complex project. And there's a couple of issues that I would sort of like to hear a discussion on at the outset. One of them you brought up Jerry, which is the whole question of lateral access and whether -- and there has been a change in the lateral access provisions between the initial submission and this one. And I guess the question I would have is whether we feel that the provided lateral access along the bayside of this project meets the requirements of the coastal land use plan and the waterfront master plan. And I'll just give you -- I'd just like to start out by giving you the background, you know, the quotations from the code. And this is Coastal Land Use Policy 1.20 Paragraph 1. Each application for new development or lease which would result in an increase in intensity of use or expansion of an existing structure seaward or an increase in height shall include a physical provision for continuous lateral access along the bayfront portion of the parcel. And then Waterfront Master Plan Page 4-6 Paragraph 3 says, "Continue the concept of lateral access across the waterfront by developing pedestrian walkway along the waterfront and to the T-piers." And Waterfront Master Plan Page 5-4 says, "Note the requirements for minimum eight-foot-wide lateral public access is not reduced by these requirements and is part of the city's coastal plan and zoning requirements." So it seems to me that clearly continuous lateral access is required. So the question is, is lateral access along the floating piers an appropriate way of doing that, an adequate way of doing that as is proposed in this case? Sure.
Actually, I don't think it is. I don't think that people will walk down on the piers as part of a harbor walk. I think, you know, most people go out to the piers if they're going out on a boat or if they're, you know, picking up fish or doing something. I really don't believe it is the same. And I don't think that you can use a view deck, as nice as that is, as part of lateral access either.
The other thing I contribute is, it's really hard for me to think of the life safety issue if we've got this large public space that ends in a closed situation. In other words, it's in a typical building, you might be limited to 20 or 40 feet of horizontal, what they call dead-end corridor. And in this case, I think it's probably significantly longer than that. So I'm almost wondering, from a life safety point of view, even if we have limited access, the ability to have emergency access or some kind of access across the whole waterside face keeps us able to open that side up. I'm concerned that we'll get restrictions on this because of the inability of people to exit once they go down that dead end on the harbor side. So I'd like to see it. I appreciate the comments about the working waterfront aspects conflicting with public walkway, but I think getting around that end has a certain benefit, even if it is then directing you to the pocket park and back along the water, along the land side. But my biggest concern is that these are some of the largest parcels we have on the waterfront before we start looking at what happens across the street at some point hopefully. And we're losing some of the benefits that we gained with the things to the south, which have been spectacular with these requirements. So I don't want to compromise any of the working waterfront aspects. And I'm not an expert on D and the nature of what happens in some of these areas that are more the commercial fishermen. I don't want to disrupt any of that, but I do think there is an aspect of getting around that corner that is significantly different. Now, we do have more corner taken away. The one thing I want to say is when you do look at that public access, that southwest corner, which is the lower right-hand corner of both those drawings, there's significantly more open space now on that side. And as you're walking along the waterfront, that opens up the bay views substantially. So to me, it's not an aesthetic thing. It's a factor of public safety, and I think it's a factor of it seems like the natural place to make a transition to the park from the corner rather than have a dead end.
I agree with Commissioner Lucas on that and you Catherine. Regarding the walkway around the building, I don't think you could mitigate something that away by putting a upstairs observation deck. I feel that, and I'm kind of maybe getting off on a tangent a little bit, but forgive me, but putting an observation deck with a restaurant is going to kind of make it like a restaurant, you know, place of sitting. And it's not going to encourage, regardless of what sign you put up there, it's not going to encourage like public access. And so with that in mind, I think that it's important that we, you know, have this view shed for people to be able to walk around the building there.
Jerry? I think it's just really a natural. You've got the roadway access and it would, two points, you know, what's been mentioned already. You know, the up-down in height of trying to get from the ocean to the Embarcadero, you know, is great for a lot of people and it's important and I, you know, and it'd be great to be able to walk down, you know, to walk down the ramp and go see the, you know, the otters and everything else and getting closer to the ocean. But I don't think that alleviates the requirement and the enjoyment of what we're trying to do on the whole Embarcadero by having the continuous walkway on the bayside, which is in our, which is in the harbor, you know, harbor master plan, harbor front master plan. And so also, I grew up on working docks. I grew up, my dad was a commercial fisherman, I was a commercial fisherman. There's, the one derrick is not a highly dangerous working environment there. It can easily be, you know, we can include the condition that in, when it is in operation, which I've rarely seen in all my years here, that they can temporarily block off that walkway. I don't see a problem with that temporarily while it's in use. And I would support a condition of that, but the original concept plan that was approved had a walkway, and I think that's important to reestablish that walkway.
Okay, so I guess I would like to distinguish between the general case and the case that we have before us tonight. Because, and because I think, Scott, I think you're hearing a consensus on the part of the commission here, that in general lateral access along floating docks does not meet the requirements of the waterfront master plan. And I would honestly, at the end of this discussion, I'd like to have a motion that we request Scott to bring back a resolution to that effect for future consideration. But we're not looking at this particular application in a vacuum. You know, I'm cognizant of the fact that it had a lateral access. It was taken out because the city council told the applicants to take it out. That's why it was removed. And I guess, you know, I would like to see that resolution, but I would sort of be willing in this particular case to say I would go along with it. How do people feel about that? No? Okay. It's not easy, guys. It's not an easy decision.
If I can interject another comment here, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. This is discussion.
This isn't a hard problem on this. It's not, this isn't a can't-do situation that I see here. It's pretty simple. It's a minimal area. It's around that one facade, that one face of the building. And it'll connect up to the other walkways that are already there. And then it, then, but it's making that connection from the roadway through that side of the building, and it just opens that up. So I don't see this as being onerous, completely onerous to the building owner. We're talking about probably 20 feet of walkway is all we're talking about.
Was it 40? Sorry.
Yeah, staff, the building setback from the harbor walk on the land side, is that a requirement? There's like an extra two feet plus on the land side between the harbor walk and the facade?
Are you asking about the front setback of the building?
Yeah.
You're asking, what is the setback?
I guess I'm asking you, is there, my sense is from the adjacent structures that are directly on the land side of the harbor walk, that there's no requirement for it to be set back. So if we were talking about sliding the building eastward two feet, you've gained probably two feet of what you have to find somewhere.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, so I can quickly look that up here. Just a second. And I do have coastal staff report where they talked about lateral access and the connectivity on the north and south sides. If you wanted me to read you some of what their staff's analysis was, I can do that. Okay, almost there.
While she's looking at that, maybe other people would like to.
Well, I think it might be fairly onerous on the builder to come up with that 20 to 40 feet. However, I think that'd be a lost opportunity if we don't see what we can do to increase the lateral access all the way across. I don't think we're going to have a whole lot of different opportunities in order to make things better for a harbor walk and getting close to the bay. And I think that everyone that we don't try to make happen is a lost opportunity. But I do believe it probably will be somewhat difficult for them to do it.
The base CF zoning district talks about a five-foot setback, but, you know, standard zoning regulations are from lot line. We have lease lines here, and it's my understanding that the harbor walk runs through this lease line, so.
But also under the PD provisions, we could permit them to build to the edge of the harbor walk if we chose, right?
Right, mhm, yeah.
Any thoughts from this end of the table?
I think if you look at this relative to other issues we're talking about, I would take the upper floor and the view sheds that are described if we got the back access. I'll buy the view shed argument if we get the lateral access in there. And I think if you move the building two feet eastward, you're halfway to getting your problems solved.
We're just talking about lateral access now, right?
Yeah.
Maybe I got a question for staff. And this is maybe getting stuff in the huck of the big picture. Now, these leases have been given to the city by the state lands. Is that correct? And based on, with the provisions that we, one of the provisions is having a view shed and lateral access. That's what we're entrusted in? Am I correct or am I just?
Yes, you're correct. So you're citing a couple of different requirements. So as our local coastal plan requires and our waterfront master plan is that there be lateral access on new development. But then also via the state lands commission, the city of Morro Bay is entrusted with administering this tidlins trust grant. And so the city acts as both really a landlord and a regulatory agency when it comes to these lease sites. The harbor department negotiates lease terms with leases such as Mr. Fowler, and in exchange for so many years of leasing this space, they're required to do certain things to improve the lease sites in a manner that's consistent with the city goals, LCP, the, you know, tidlins trust, those responsibilities.
So in the perfect world, you know, any kind of development would, we, the city has the ability maybe to waive certain things, but in the perfect world, we would have lateral access on all new development there, correct?
Right, right. And so under the planned development overlay, that's the requirement, that's the zoning provision that says there are certain properties, such as these tidlins properties or publicly-owned land, that there's unique circumstances or characteristics. And so when this went forward for concept plan, there was discussion about, you know, these are the requirements and we can make deviation from these requirements if there's significant public benefit. And they presented a plan that they, you know, that the city approved that said, yes, we can make findings to approve this. And even in the coastal commission staff report, when they approved this in 2009, they talked about lateral access both on the north and the south sides. And they had said that in some areas, because of the working docks, that it wasn't always feasible and that they allowed other approvals. And I'm kind of, I'm quoting out of context right now, but I had it here. I just lost my screen on the iPad here. But if you wanted some more detail about that particular paragraph that coastal talked about on this subject, I can get that up.
That's okay. But what I see is like in one of the provisions as a working dock and a working harbor, this particular project is more, less of a working kind of project than, and more of a retail type aspect of it. You know, you've got your retail on the bottom and then you're putting a restaurant on top. So it's a little different than like a cannery, for instance, you know.
True, yeah. The business today is consistent with the verges tackle shop business. So it is conditioned to be required to be marine-related, consistent with measure D, support of commercial fishing. It won't be, I mean, it'll be required to be consistent with those requirements, unlike something you might see on the south end of the Embarcadero. You know, I mean, right now there's sport fishing there, there's, you know.
Tackle.
Tackle. Yeah, all related to fishing, whereas the art dealers, you know, five blocks down on the south end of the Embarcadero.
But I just, to me, it seems like, you know, just because somebody sells shrimp cocktail doesn't mean they're supporting commercial fishing, you know.
So the second, I guess the second general issue that, and perhaps even more important, is the view corridor provisions. And, you know, I'm going to lead out the discussion on this if people would allow me to do so, because it really, I think, speaks to the philosophy of how the planning commission operates. The view corridors, in my opinion, to me, the lateral access and whether it can be on the docks or not is kind of an interpretation issue, okay? To me, this is, the view corridor issue is simply, are we going to apply a straightforward reading of the ordinance? Or are we going to apply a very strained reading of the ordinance? View corridors are, view corridors are mentioned on about five different pages of the waterfront master plan. The definition, and you have to listen, the definition is, "View corridors shall be linear spaces located between or adjacent to buildings affording views from the street of the harbor base and Spitton Marrok." So to me, the key words here are between or adjacent to buildings. It does not include the word above in that sentence. And then on the, that's on page 5-1 of the waterfront master plan. Then when you get to 5-2, it defines what the view corridors need to be. And for a 50-foot-wide or more lot with a building 17 to 25 feet high, it needs to be 30 percent of the width of the lot, linear feet, not square feet, not view area, linear feet. And to me, this is very, very clear. When you go over to page 5-3, it talks again about view corridors. And the waterfront master plan puts so much emphasis on these that basically what they said is, you cannot approve an increased building height based on the PD overlay unless you have all of the PD overlay findings plus you find that the view corridors are adequate. The only place that this, there is no text anywhere in the waterfront master plan that says this volumetric method is an alternative to the width of the view corridors. There's not, that text just does not exist. There's a figure 5-2 that shows this, okay, on one instance, okay? And it shows the shaded area and it says it must not exceed the other shaded area, okay? But it doesn't say that that, meeting that, substitutes for having the view corridors. In fact, on each one of these figures, it says minimum 30 percent of lot width for the view corridors. So just, to me, it's, the question is, which of these two appears to be the intent of the ordinance? Is it that you have 30 percent of the lot width or is that you have this other thing? I would point out also that this thing of the shaded area and the area above the roof doesn't even show up on the page that talks about lots that are less than 50 feet in width or lots that are on the corner. It doesn't even show up on those two pages. It's only on that one particular page. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that on figure 5.3, where it talks about the required view corridors for corner lots, at the very bottom of the page, it says, "Minimum flat roof area allowable, 50 percent of floor area." So to me, that's just an additional criteria that's put on there, just like the additional volumetric criteria that's put on the preceding page. To me, that does not imply that if you have a maximum flat area, less than 50 percent of the floor area, you can disregard the view corridors. So to me, you know, I think it's very clear that the authors of the waterfront master plan meant that on a 50-foot lot with a building 17 to 25 feet high, 30 percent of the width of the lot will be, we will be dedicated to view corridors. But I would love to hear a discussion from the rest of the commission, because I believe whatever we finally decide on this, we should clarify with the resolution as well.
I think it's pretty clear. I think it's creative to use volume. I think it's clear that it should be the percentage and it should be of the linear lot line.
Scott, what do you say?
I agree with Sherpas and Teff. It's a linear calculation. Now, I do also agree that the city, when we originally reviewed this process, took the volumetric approach and ran with it and, you know, approved the project accordingly. I would not have gone down that road based on the way that things were.
Okay. The other, well, one of the verbiage in there too that struck me was "from the street." It does not mean from a second story. It means from the street. So I interpret that as at four foot eight, five foot two for eyeball height.
There's also, yeah, there's also a lot of other information on the view corridors about, you can't have any plants higher than 30 inches. So how can you have a building in the view corridor? And I'd like to clarify again, at this point, we're discussing, I would say we're discussing the principle.
Right.
Scott makes a good point. There's a history here, and I think we need to come back and appreciate that history when we talk about the individual project. But I think right now, what I would like to do is to establish a basis for a couple of resolutions to move forward with in the future.
Well, one of the things too is that this is a concept plan along with a precise plan. So we are not strictly limited to picking colors.
We're not at all limited.
As we would in a precise plan.
Correct.
So this, because of the changes in it, it's coming before us as if, essentially, even though it has history, as a new proposal. Is that a correct interpretation?
When this came back in, it was an entirely different design for the building. My position at the time when I reviewed it was, city council's never seen this, and so they need to see it. So I spoke with staff, spoke to Cindy, and I said, what other processes have we used to maybe get them there? You know, and we've done it a couple of different times, we've done this concept precise process where it goes from the planning commission up to the city council. I said, let's do that. Let's not get them in the endless loop. You know, my idea was throw them a little bit of a bone, you know, and to get them up there and get the, you know, the one-time shot through Planning Commission, City Council. there and get the, you know, the one-time shot through Planning Commission, City Council, as opposed to doing that and then coming back down. That was my intent behind it, and so that's why we went down that road. I think Coastal still looks at it as like the original project with the direction that they gave. They said, "It came to us. We said, 'Make it look different.'" They made it look different, sent it back to the city, and I'm like, "Okay, but it's a different project." And I was very uncomfortable, you know, suggesting that we go through a precise plan with the Planning Commission and end it here when this is not what was reviewed by the...
Well, and if you had brought it forward as a precise plan, and the precise plan had a different number of buildings and different shapes and different volumes than the previous one, we would have had to find it inconsistent. So, you know, that wouldn't have worked.
I was really just trying to resolve that piece of it and to do something that made sense and a process that we've used in the past.
Right.
I don't disagree with Commissioner Teff, but I think we have discernment here. And if this was the precise plan, if there was mitigation that included the walkway and the waterside, I would be willing to accept whatever we need as an amendment to condition it or as a variance from the code to allow that. It's 17 feet, and there's a roadway on the other side of the structure. So it's gapped by significant things, there were, within a few percentage points, of what was put together as a general figure that they thought was applicable. We have a specific figure here, and I'm willing to compromise on that text that...
Well, I, when we get to it, Michael, I actually think there's a code provision that would allow us to accept these view corridors in this particular project if we wanted to, without setting a precedent going forward.
I mean, I just think there's a huge difference between the original concept building and this one in terms of massing. This one's much more successful, I think. Significantly more successful.
Scott, or Cindy, on this site plan, for instance, I'm going to kind of go back to, like, this is part of the view corridor with the demolition, the, I'm going to call it, the boat building. And when you demolish that boat building, in your little blue box thing, you have that maintenance shed, because that'll expose, basically exposes that right into the view corridor, right? Now, I'm not, wasn't getting some, I didn't really get a clear answer whether it got a CDP or it got a waiver, I got two answers. So I'm looking at, like, was that part, that building, part of the CDP originally that was put in? Because the blue is around it, and then over here it isn't. You know what I'm saying? You know, like, because if you remove that building, it opens up a corridor, because you removed that other, that boat building.
But if I could, Richard, I'm sorry, but could you weigh in on the whole idea of how we should interpret the view corridor at this point?
Okay. I think that, to me, it's pretty clear. To me, it's pretty clear with the 30%.
Okay.
So that's the way, to answer your question in a concise manner, that would be it.
So would the commission agree to asking Scott to put together a resolution to that effect as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, let's, let me just, let me just point out something with regard to this particular project, okay? Because, again, we have a history. And the history here is that we have a concept plan that was approved by the city and approved by the City Council, okay? So there is a provision in the design guidelines that says, in terms of allowing extra height, it says that we may allow relocation of existing view corridors or visual openings between or through buildings, as long as there is no reduction in the measured width when compared to existing corridors. So we have here what I think we could consider an existing view corridor, which is the view corridors that are on the approved concept plan, okay? This plan does not reduce those. It merely relocates them. So we could find this to be, this particular project, to be appropriate on that basis. And that's also something that is not going to haunt us in the future, because we're not going to have approved concept plans on the next project that comes through.
Well, we might have on alternate projects that are in this leasehold, are in this master plan, such as the GAFCO and the GAFCO Market.
GAFCO's it.
Yeah, that's the, on the other land side.
And then the Harbor Hut. Is there, is there going to be any development on the Harbor Hut property?
No, on the Harbor Hut, under this use permit, there's no construction that exceeds 17 feet. There is a, there is a use permit that the city approved in 2012 for an office space to, for the Harbor Hut Restaurant. But I, the applicant's agent is a representative on that one, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. That's not increasing the footprint of that existing Harbor Hut Restaurant. It's not going to get any taller.
Would that be allowed under Measure D?
It was allowed under Measure D, and I think that was the basis of the legal action. And it simply was relocating existing restaurant uses. So what was storage in the restaurant, they're relocating that to a, they're basically swapping uses. So the restaurant is not getting any larger, therefore consistent with Measure D. That's what the city approved. It was like right before I started here, so I'm a little bit fuzzy on the details. But the city found that it was consistent with Measure D, in a nutshell.
Okay. So I think, we've sort of addressed the two, the two general principles that I think this project, you know, brought up as urgently needing to be solved. So I would say, now let's get down to specifics and discuss what we've got before us. You seem to be going tonight.
I'm sweating out tonight.
You had your coffee before.
I did, I did. Well, actually, I really like the building. I think it's, it's much more interesting. I like the new profile of the building. I do appreciate that there will be a view deck, though I think it will be used for the restaurant, but that's not a bad thing and keeps business here. I think it's a good mix between the commercial, you know, commercial fishing that's there and just waterfront access. However, it would be ever so much better if we did have a true waterfront walkway all the way across the building and not really plan that the fingers and the boat slips are the walkways. I really do think a Harbor Walk bayside is imperative.
Let me just ask Scott a question here. We're not, what we're doing here tonight is making recommendations to the City Council, okay, on both the precise and the concept plan. So can we, so we really have three choices, as I see it, okay? And correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm making this up as I go along. We can deny the application. We can, we can approve the application with recommendations to the City Council that they require changes in the application, or we could approve it as is and send it along. So those are our three, okay? So as we discuss it, I think it's good to keep that in mind.
Okay. I guess I'm next in line. I think this building is...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you can interrupt. You could also continue it and have them bring back the changes if you want to.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Four options.
Four options.
Okay. I think they've done a marvelous job over the first concept. I think this building fits a Moro Bay character and creates an iconography for future, if that's a word, for the future development. And I commend, commend the architect and the owner for going in that direction. The problem I have is one of fairness to the other leaseholders, that, you know, we've required other leaseholders to bite the bullet and, you know, connect the harbor, harborside walkway. And I don't think in all fairness that we can give exemptions to specific owners. And that's one of my tenants for, for standing up to create that Harbor Walkway. And I think it's also one of the, one of the best things that we've done in Moro Bay as far as planning and influence on tourism. It's amazing how many people use, use the Harbor Walkway and how it's changed some people's lives. You know, it's their only way to interact with the ocean and with the harbor. And having it start, stop, and jiggle around, I think, is a fallacy. We need to make through connections, and I think we can here. So that's my main point. I would condition this project with that provision. Also, a couple of other provisions I'd like the commission to talk about would be, is on the upstairs deck is just, you know, put signage, you know, that it is a public deck, both at the bottom of the stairs, you know, and pointing up, and then, you know, and then up on the, on the deck saying it's a public, public area. I would like, you know, whether we restrict the restaurant from using it, I think that's something that we should talk about. I would hate to do that, but I would not want to see it as a restaurant patio and where somebody would have to buy a drink or buy a shrimp cocktail to enjoy it. So how do we make that, you know, split that, you know, that conundrum there, to make metaphors? And I would be willing, as Commissioner Lucas is, to forego the at-surface-level view corridors for the completion of the walkway and the connection of the walkway, and still allow people that are willing and people that are able to go down to the, to the surface of the water on the floating docks to still have, allow them the access there, too. Because I think there's two, those are two different experiences, and I think those are two important experiences. So I think we just need to talk about what we're doing with the upper deck and what's important to the commission on that. But that's about where I sit.
To me, this, this looks out of place in this area of the Embarcadero. And I, I think that you, putting, you could put all the signs you want about having a public access to a deck, but it's kind of reminds me what's similar, what's going on on Main Street with the yogurt shop, you know? It's theoretically public, but it kind of like lends itself to a patio for the restaurant that's upstairs. I, I think that we have a responsibility to kind of adhere to what the waterfront management plan says with regarding to view sheds and that we, that we not set precedences in that, in that direction.
Well, I think it's, the architects did a tremendous job upgrading from the previous one. My only concern is I will disagree with my colleagues on the roof line. I appreciate the comments about boats and things, but when I see it, all I think of is China. And I, I can't imagine, that's not, I'm unique in that observation. I love the exposed idea. I just don't know if I buy the curved configuration, the way it's shown. I like the massing, except for the roof profile, and I like the idea that the stair is now in the front, so that if it's, if it's signified by a sign that you're welcome to come up, now that opportunity is right in the front of the building. It's much more significant than it was before. We have a secondary way that suggests anybody looking down that north corridor, that there's a way to get up there. So I think the visual cues are all there. I think it would be a spectacular place to get up and see the working part of the harbor along with getting elevated above some of the larger boats that might be down there. I don't know exactly how to deal with the top, except to maybe say there's not table service out there. I mean, if you buy something in the restaurant and you choose to sit out there, if it's got takeaway, or if someone would choose to come up, I think the main thing would be that you just can't get someone coming to the table to take an order with the assumption that those tables belong to the restaurant. I think it would be a spectacular place. In my mind, I know we're never to venture with our dollars outside of Moro Bay, but I think of schooners up in Cayucus when I think about this, with the way they develop the upper level there that is so beautiful looking out over the water. So I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of progress here. And I'm, like Commissioner Lour said, I'm willing to compromise on the view shed. I just do have a concern about the roof. It just may be my own hangup. I love the exposed timber everywhere. I love the story of the piles coming up. To me, that's the expression, that is the way buildings are built here. And that's, that's a beautiful story to tell with not much of the articulation that's around the building.
Can I interject something for a second? There is a condition of approval on the project from the Coastal Commission that talks about the public, the public view deck, and it says that the public view decks shall be conspicuously signed and available for public use, and any tables on the public view decks shall include signs on them, the individual tables, indicating that the public may use the tables for free without purchase. That's existing, that's an existing condition.
Yeah, the, since, I guess it's down to me, anyway. On that issue, the Coastal Commission used a sentence for the GAFCO public deck that I kind of like. It's, "Tables and chairs shall not interfere with through pedestrian access from the municipal tee pier and shall be appropriately decided in space to ensure adequate public access, maneuverability, and space for viewing, including at the perimeter of the deck." So if you have them back from the perimeter, I think that's where people are going to want to congregate to view. So maybe we can include that in the thing here. In terms of, in terms of the architecture, honestly, I really liked it. I liked the architecture. I liked the color palette, the curved, the curved eaves. I like them. Yeah, I did. I got a little bit of a Chinese, but, you know, again, it's Moro Bay. It's eclectic, you know? It's something that you're not going to see necessarily in every place, you know? Other than that, I thought it was, I thought it was great. In terms of, in terms of the view corridors, I think that I would, I would be willing to, to find that the increased height is consistent under the provisions of this paragraph C that talks about the relocation of existing openings. And, you know, I think, I'd just like to make that logic clear, that we're considering the existing condition to be the approved concept plan, and this does not decrease the, compared to that. Not that we're considering the existing condition to be what's actually built right now.
If you decided to go down that road, we could certainly add a finding to that effect to make it clear.
Yes. I think we, I think that's absolutely important. In terms of the lateral access, one thing, one of the things that I think the previous council was trying to, because the access before was completely cantilevered out over the bay, eight feet more out... the bay, eight feet more out over the bay, in addition to what's already there. I think you can split the difference a little bit. In other words, just from looking, because of the way the building is oriented, I think you could cantilever a little more without shading water. You'd still be shading revetment because of the angle of the sun and because this building basically is east-west, not north-south, like most of the Embarcadero. So I would either condition it or recommend to the city council that they consider the degree to which continuous lateral access could be achieved on land. So, you know, I would move it forward. My preference would be to move it forward rather than condition it, you know, because it's got to go to the council, anyway. And whatever we do, you know? But we could certainly move it forward with the recommendation that all efforts be made to achieve lateral access.
Well, we can move it forward with that condition stated.
Or that condition. Can we put a condition on it if we're not approving it? We could recommend a condition, I guess.
Yeah, you can recommend that the condition be added, yes.
Okay. Are there, so is there a consensus to move it forward to the council? I mean, because guys, it's going there one way or another, anyway, right?
I'll not agree unless we have that condition, that there is for lateral access.
Yeah, and I was gonna, with that condition. And then I was going to ask, are there any other conditions that we would like to recommend that the council include or consider?
You know that language that you found with the way it was with the tables and the markings, you know, where the notices on the tables for the public to, you mentioned? Maybe that was for the Great American Fish Company part of it?
Oh, right, right.
Yeah. Well, maybe adding it into this one here. And Scott or Cindy, can you give me a little bit more clarity now? If this goes up to the city council, how is this relating to the other phases as this project continues? How's this, I mean, how's this gonna kind of like follow up here? What's the follow up here regarding, like, okay, you got this project, but then you got all these other, because it's under still this one CDP umbrella. So how are you guys going to be like juggling this?
Like the rest of the project. I mean, they've actually completed a lot of the, you know, the ocean side or the bayside improvements, you know, that are part of this permit. They have, we have some in plant check right now at the building, in the building department right now, you know, for Mr. Fowler. And this is no different than that. It's another phase of the project that once he is able to gain approval through the city, he'll go back to the Coastal Commission and they'll, you know, have the Coastal Commission review it for consistency, and then they'll send it back with the CDP. And we'll be able to issue them, you know, then he'll be able to submit for his building permit for the improvements that you see today. And he'll be able to get a building permit for that, start construction. By then, his dock project, he stood right here when we were at break and said his intent is to start construction in that in September if we'll give him a building permit. So that's his idea, based on when he has to do his eelgrass studies.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, so, yeah, Richard, I agree with that recommendation, because I brought it up. Does anybody else have a problem with including that condition about the sighting of the tables? I'll give you the, I've got the sentence here in the Coastal Commission report. Okay.
Okay. In that lateral access, when we're talking about that, what I wanted, we should include that, that they will be required on their side of the lot line to do what is necessary to connect to the Harbor Hut project for lateral access at the Harbor Hut project on their south side of there. So that that will not be a hindrance to get the connection through the backside of the Harbor Hut. So I want to have that conditioned in there also. And all it'd be is just an eight-foot extension on the south side of there.
We don't have any lateral access around the harbor.
No, but when they come forward with a development plan for there.
I was under the impression there wasn't a development plan for the Harbor Hut.
No, there isn't. But when they, at some point, they will come forward with a, you know, with a.
Should such lateral access be developed in the future?
Right, right. So just so that it doesn't become an impediment to make the connection.
Okay, to do this, and some input from the applicant related to potential lack of feasibility there, I would request that the condition include language such that we are able to evaluate that. Because I don't know, I don't, I mean, she said it's, the city's made decisions in the past about Harbor Hut, and there's an issue potentially over there. I would like to have that evaluated so that we can see that and take that forward to the council. So the idea would be, you're saying, we would like it, the design to be, at least accommodate future access and connection to Harbor Hut, assuming that that's feasible.
When it comes forward for development.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, I mean, I get to, I'm going to do, I want to do two things. I want to study the feasibility of that. You can put in a condition that you want us to do it, and then predicate it on the feasibility study of it as well. And so that'll be the recommendation that we take forward to council. Like, I'm going to evaluate it and take a look at that to see if there really is an issue or not. And so, and if there's not, then I'll tell the council that and say the conditions added by the planning commission, if we see a problem, then I'll say, "Planning commission recommended that it be designed to accommodate future connection. There's a reason why you can't do it. Here it is." Okay? All right? Does that seem fair? Okay, all right.
So we're getting close. There's one other issue we haven't addressed, folks, and that's the sign.
Are you comfortable about the life safety, Commissioner Lucas?
Oh, if it goes.
If it goes all the way through, then?
Sure, yeah.
One thing about a dock, you can always jump off. There's always egress from a dock. Okay, the sign.
We don't really have an image of it, except it's sort of on the left side of the streetscape, right? Is there a specific blow, I didn't recall seeing a blow-up image of it.
I could pull it up on Google Earth if you wanted me to go over to the computer.
Sure. Why not?
My understanding, the sign is not conforming to.
This was my issue, and mine alone. I took a look at the project. I took a look at the fact that the sign's existing there. It's a pole sign. It's non-conforming. And they're redoing the entirety of the lease site. I said, "That's when you make things conform." I don't think that a pole sign lends anything whatsoever to this design, to this area, to the Embarcadero, to the idea that we're creating the theme of Fishing Village down there. It doesn't do any of those things. So my, and I think maybe it was kind of an afterthought, or it was something that was never discussed as part of the previous approvals. I could be wrong. But if it was, I don't know why it would still be there. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. And so this is the reason I was against having it in there, and the reason why there's a condition in here, a recommended condition to remove it. Because I just didn't see why, when we're redoing it, why would we leave that there? It made no sense to me. They should have signage that's consistent with the theme that's supposed to be down there. That was my only thought.
Excuse me. On the mall plan, on the mall site plan, it didn't show the sign. I don't, unless I'm missing it.
The original concept plans that went through did have, their simulations included them in there. And the site plan itself, you know, the plans are a little fuzzy, but there seems to be a couple of dots there. And I would give them that that was supposed to be the sign. I would give on that, I think. But their simulations did show them. I mean, they're in there, so.
Okay.
Not that they weren't showing it or that it wasn't a part of it. It was shown. I'm just saying, I don't think it should be.
I agree with you, Scott. We try to, we need to start working on conforming to, as much as we can. And I think that's, that's all I got to say about that.
I don't think it, well, it doesn't meet the present sign go, does it? Okay.
I remember distinctly, back in 2007, no, when this first came up, or I believe when GAFCO came up with improvements, one of the things that was part of the commission deliberations was their sign, because it didn't conform. That sign, though, strikes me as a vintage sign that went with the building type. And so I was actually advocating it should stay. With this one, it's more like a 50s kind of, you know, hotel sign. And I'm not sure that's the nature of the structure that we have here. So it seems to me to be contrasting with the quality of the structure we've just approved, which is distinctive in and of itself. It's its own sign.
It looks like a freeway sign. I don't, I mean, it doesn't seem like that's something that you would want down there. You want it next to a highway or something.
And this is a PD overlay, guys. The question is, does this sign contribute to better design of this project? Or does it detract? To me, it detracts. So I would vote to require that it be removed. Do we have a consensus on that, I think? Okay. So have we given you enough information that we could just have a motion to, that we could just move to recommend to the city council approval of the submitted concept plan and precise plan with the modifications proposed? With the modifications?
And findings, yes.
That have been delineated, modifications and findings. I'm sorry, public comment is closed an hour ago.
Well, I fell off my couch to get here, so I appreciate being able to say a few words concerning this topic.
Okay, we'll open it up, but this is an exception.
Jim Polly, Morro Bay, citizen for 15 years. Over the 15 years, I've been listening to these proposals that come in from people that are getting leases or renewing their leases. Let's tell the truth. The truth is, if they have a leasehold and they have a restaurant, they don't want any public to see the bay or the boat or anything unless they go through their front doors and buy a meal. And it's just getting sickening. And they hire consultants to get, you know, let's find our way through, let's change, let's rub elbows. Hey, the fact is, it says eight-feet walkway on the bayside. And you people that aren't for that, I don't know where you're from, but I tell you, I think I represent most of the people in Morro Bay and what they think about a walkway along the bayside. We need that, we want that. A lot of those things have been done, more or less, fewer to eight feet, but have you ever tried to walk around GAFCO on the bayside? Have you tried to get on the floating dock north of the bayside? Hey, you know, and all along there, what was it, by the marine park? You couldn't even get on the small walkway that went around the back. I appreciate those commissioners that support what's in the city charter, the fact that there will be a walkway on the bayside. And you know what happened to the walkway before? All the restaurateurs got together and got that walkway put in front of their front door, so it leads to their front door. That's not it. It's supposed to be on the bayside. And in the marine park, where the fishermen are, hey, the fishermen are the same damn way. You know, what is their counsel here that they had? That's controlled by the fishermen and the boaters. The citizens don't have any say in any of that stuff. Everything's done in the closet. Well, hey, a walkway can be put down that way, along the docks and everything else. But what I'm saying is, it should be continuous, and none of this piecemealing the project to death. This is ridiculous. My God, how long you been working on this? How many times have been revised? And then you want it, well, hey, put in there that we'll look at, we'll discuss about it, and if it's practical, they're just waiting to get a hold of that one. Boy, you think anything's going to be connected from the floating dock up there that people can walk? No. So I appreciate those in the council that supported the walkway and that support the public having a view. Pretty soon, you'll have us down with the dog park, dog beach, walking with the dogs. How many places can we walk here? And then the fishermen and the boat haulers, they want to haul out right there in the corner. It looks like it's going to be changed, but that's exasperating. Is, are the citizens working for the special interests here? Those people that have leases on the Embarcadero for food or whatever, concessionaires, and the fishermen? No. I mean, this is Morro Bay. It's not vendors and fishermen community. So, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so with that, I will move that we forward this to city council with the recommendations and findings previously discussed for their review.
And that's via adoption of Resolution 1715.
That's exactly what it is. Very good. Is there a second?
Was it moved?
Do we need a reading of the conditions, or?
I can restate them. So I have, the first one is, recommend that the council consider the degree to which continuous lateral access can be achieved on land, or all efforts to be made to consider a degree to which continuous lateral access can be achieved on land.
I think we were a little stronger than that.
Yeah, maybe a little weak.
That's what I wrote, verbatim, but I can change it.
I think we have it as a requirement, as a condition, that lateral access be achieved. And that if possible, how do we want to state? If possible, that in the, that a connection shall be facilitated with Harbor Hut.
That it be designed in such a manner that, that it be designed in a manner that would allow for a connection to a continuation of the path from Harbor Hut property as feasible.
Okay.
Is that okay?
And then the second condition was, I was actually going to be relying on Scott's memory tomorrow morning, because I missed part of that, but Commissioner Sadowski, that was the condition about sighting of tables, consistent with the language how GAFCO has done.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't have the exact sentence.
It's, yeah.
Oh, you read it, and then you were going to provide it to Scott.
Pardon?
You had read the condition, and you said you were going to provide it to Scott.
Right, correct.
We also are going to state the affirmation of Dr. Teff's interpretation of the view corridor, but then say that we were willing to, whatever the correct planning word is. corridor, but then say that we were willing to, whatever the correct planning word is.
That would be a finding.
We have the original approval, right? And so the, the resubmitted revised design does not worsen the, it actually improves the view corridor, right? By, I think, right?
I would, okay, I would say that the, the finding should be that the, the view corridor, the view corridors provided are not adequate to meet the dimensions specified for new construction by the waterfront master plan, but may be approved under, but may be, may be approved, one second, too many pieces of paper. But, but may be approved in a court, but may be approved because they are, because there is no reduction in the measured width as compared to the approved concept plan, which is considered to be the existing condition.
That last thing that you just said, compared to the approved concept plan, then?
Which is considered to be the existing condition.
Which is considered to be the existing condition.
Because the, because the phrase in the waterfront master plan, Cindy, is when, when compared to existing conditions, so.
The benefit, too, is this meeting's being recorded, so I can always say that.
And then the other recommend, you had the recommend, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm rushing them.
And then the last issue was the issue of signs, but there's no new condition added because that was already included. It's planning condition three, so.
Okay. Good.
So we have two added conditions on lateral access and siding of tables and then the additional finding, as you just stated.
Good.
Will this come back before us for, because we don't have a, I didn't, I didn't see really locations of signage and all of that that we normally see on a precise plan, or is this the last time we'll see this?
There is, if you look on.
There was.
Plan sheet A14, it has the sign program for that and then. And then the signs are also shown on the east elevation on A, sheet A8.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Cindy, what was that?
The proposed sign program.
This, the very last thing you said.
Oh, sheet A8. If you look on the east elevation, if you're looking on your reductions, it's kind of hard to see. You might need to take off your glasses like I have to, but it's a little bit more visible on the full-size plans.
I was thinking more of the individual signage for like access signage and.
Oh, okay.
And stuff for, you know, for the, the walk, the stairway going up, you know, to the, to the deck and.
Okay, yeah, and so for that coastal access signage, they're showing that on A1, but for instance, like the condition that requires signs on each of the individual tables on that second floor deck, we don't have a spec for that.
Okay, that, that's fine. It was just, I just wanted to make sure that there, there was some signage located on the stairwells, on each of the stairwells, you know, stairways going up to the, to the deck.
And I'd, I'd like to see a sign on the elevator as well.
Yeah.
That indicates that the elevator goes to the public access deck.
You might want to consider amending your motion to incorporate an additional sign that.
Yeah, let me just see if everybody.
Gotcha, sorry.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
So then I will amend my motion to include also a condition that a sign be placed on or adjacent to the elevator indicating that the elevator accesses a public viewing deck.
Would that be elevator in addition to bottom of staircase?
In addition to the staircase signs.
Do we need a second on your amendment?
Yeah.
I'll second the amended.
And so this, let me ask another question as far as clarification. So we're still requiring, or we're still that the floating docks be public access to, correct? We haven't nixed that in any way.
Right, and Coastal's conditioned that as well.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Then call for the question.
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Luer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Chairperson Teft.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Okay. How are we doing, guys? Do we want a break or we want to keep going?
I'm good.
We're good? Okay. So that brings us to item number C1, which is new business, or I'm sorry, which is unfinished business, and this would be the design guidelines review. This is Scott's project.
All right, so we've had some changes to the design guidelines since we last met on May 5th. There's some changes directed by the, by the planning commission. Specifically, the planning commission directed to add a glossary and to update language to sections A, D3, E2, and H1. I've added the, I've added the requested language to those sections and you have that in your packet as, as an exhibit. And I, I made the changes in edit format so you can see them. I also made some minor cleanup language along with that as we were going to do it to provide for clarification. That's also shown in, in edit format. There was a couple of questions that I had. There was some discussion at the May 5th meeting from the planning commission regarding a desire to add some, some language related to solar access and I was, and possibly related to hillside policies. I was a little unclear on that. I didn't get real straight direction on that and I probably should have asked for clarification, but of course I didn't. And so, and then also, to follow up, we had a, I wanted to note that we had our design guidelines workshop on last Saturday, May 16th, and I'll give you a little information about what happened there as well. But going back to the solar, the solar and hillside questions, my questions for you specifically are, was the intent behind adding solar access again just to deal with shading of roof structures where you might put solar? Or were we back to looking at, because we had this in there originally, you'll recall, at one point, looking at outdoor living areas and things like that, which become fairly difficult on the smaller lots in town, thinking North Moro Bay. You know, deck areas, you're talking about shading of windows and things like that for a solar access standpoint. And then I wasn't really sure about whether there was any consensus on the hillside policy. I know we had it at one point, then we removed it, and then there was some discussion at that May 5th meeting potentially about doing something with that, and I just wasn't sure if we had consensus to go there or not, so I'm asking now. And so on the workshop side, I think I'll give you a little bit of an update. I haven't been able to, you know, crunch all the information, I'm about halfway through it at this point. But we had about 45 people there. I, it was, it was kind of interesting. You kind of had folks on both sides of the table saying they weren't strict enough or they were too strict, which means I think we're doing a good job. I think we're in the middle. I will give you a couple of the items that, that I have been able to come up with so far, just kind of in a bullet format. There was a lot of commentary about be consider, being considerate of neighbors. We had a lot of commentary related to landscaping and trees and vegetation, limiting height to no taller than, either the maximum height for the zone or the maximum height of the house that's on the property, those types of things. A lot of requests for floor area ratios. I would go back and, and pause right there. I don't know that floor area ratios, well, no, I know, I know, we can't achieve floor area ratios as part of the design guidelines. That would have to be something else the city did later if we decided to go down that road, because that's a development standard, like a setback. That would have to be done through an ordinance amendment, ratification through Coastal, that type of process. Lot of discussion about hillside considerations, so lends it back into my other question. We had a lot of concern about appropriate house sizes that were mentioned on a lot of the sheets that I got. Some of the folks thought that the building materials sections were a little too strict. Maybe they should be loosened, more generalized. Some of them thought they didn't go far enough, so there you go. There's that right down the middle of the road, maybe. We had some, talked about privacy concerns related to this. There was, there was several comments related to that. There was desire to rework the garage section and Chairperson Teft has provided you some language, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, too. There was some idea that we, as staff, favor larger homes because the city gets more money.
That was, that was said.
That was, I would say, I'll say this right now, that's pretty far from the, the truth. Couldn't be much further. When we start getting larger homes, that means there's more work for me and my, and my staff. You know, we start paying attention, once you get into that, you know, 25 to 2700 square foot thing, we really start taking a look at, at how it's laid out and how it's designed because we do have areas in town where you have much smaller homes. So that, when you got, start getting into the, the big homes that are 4,000 square foot, then we know we're probably running into issues potentially, so it makes for more Again, guidelines were overly general. Guidelines have no teeth. They want ordinance level changes, which I think would be coming. These are interim. The idea would be eventually to incorporate these into, into actual ordinances later into the zoning code, probably. We had requests to remove, a couple of different requests to remove guidelines F and then D4. It was, I saw it on three or four different things. Add incentives. A little unclear on what that, that meant. That may be just that I didn't get enough into them. I was kind of, this is kind of where I'm running out of, you know, I haven't gotten any deeper than this, maybe. There was a, a number of them about view blockage, that were concerned about view blockage and view preservation. I'll reiterate this. When I went to the, when we went, the City Council gave direction to us to not include, you know, substantial view protection policies on April, I think it was 14th. That would, that would probably involve, because of the nature of the city and the different types of areas we have, that would probably involve a lot of separate work. It could be a separate work product that we did, but we'd have to evaluate it on an area-by-area basis. It's just not, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing that we could implement. So that would be something that would, you know, would delay the implementation of this, of these guidelines, and I don't know that we really want to go there. Might be good to get this to a point where we can get it adopted and then revisit some of those things, you know, if the council gives direction to do so. Lot of comments about enforce our existing rules. It's kind of interesting. And then there were some, a couple of different comments in there that some of our surface articulation requirements were maybe too detailed. And then some suggestions that we were infringing upon personal choice and things like that. That was about as far as I got, and that was about halfway through the guidelines. So that was just kind of a taste of some of the commentary that we received. So going back to the questions I want answered, kind of take a look at that solar issue. Look at the amendments that I did make in there and make sure you're okay with those. We did have, I did have a couple of changes that Chairperson Test provided you. You have those sitting up there related to some of the language. Probably should provide some comment on that. And was there, you know, a consensus or desire to revisit the hillside component of it and where did we want to go with that if we were going to go down that road? That's about all I have for the design guideline thing. Idea, that's not all. The idea would be that I would be coming back, you know, with some finalized language for you at the next planning commission meeting. Probably going to be pushing out the recommendation to council to the, either probably the second meeting in June at this point, which I think is the 23rd, instead of the 9th. The idea was to go to the 9th, but I think maybe there's probably a little bit of work that needs to be done if I'm adding solar policies or hillside, so, okay?
I see a couple of members of the public have wondered, Dan, so why don't we open up the podium and, and take public comment at this point?
Good evening, Chairman Teft and council members. Catherine Caldwell, Moro Bay resident. Hello, Scott.
Hi.
First, I want to thank you for having the neighborhood workshop. Great idea. And I would like to say that I did attend. One thing that I noticed was that we didn't get through the agenda. There was a lot to still be discussed. I think that it's important to hold another workshop and to not rush this through the process. It's a better idea to have an interim guideline that covers the important areas that the community wants to see in the guideline. There were enough areas where there, that were problematic, but I think we're on the road to actually getting it resolved. It seemed to be a very civil discourse. People had great ideas, and I think there's enough interest generated in the community that if you had another workshop and finished the process that we started last Saturday, it would be beneficial for both the planning commission to have a tool that you can work with over the next year, one that is a little more definitive and makes your job easier than it is to rush through and just get something approved and, and out there for the public when it actually raises more questions than answers. I think you want to be real clear in your guidelines, as clear as you can be, and still give yourself room to grow and change. And this, this guideline needs more work and the community would like to have more input. So I thank you for the workshop and I, I ask you to just take it, take it a little, little more slowly, give us a little extra time, get some more community input, and extend the final decision so that you can have the, the result that you, you're trying to get. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Ted Demont, also a resident of Moro Bay, and I was also at the workshop. And a couple of thoughts. First, first of all, there, one thing that came, became quite clear at the workshop was that there, there are answers within this community. We, we were able to discuss all of these items with an, an open mind and, and a process that, that was engaging with everyone. And I think if we can do this again, we could probably reach an actual consensus opinion that was clear and definitive so that everyone could, could buy into it and, and there would be a document that, that we could broadly support and, and allow you to do your job a lot better. And I'd also like to think, I also like to say that part of the problem that, as I've seen it, particularly as an example with the Thousand Ridge Way, is that the whole process was unfair to everyone on both sides. And as we, we've, we've seen, it's expensive, it's laborious, it's divisive, it, it creates a situation in which there are no winners. And whatever we can do, if we, if we need to slow the process down, if we need to, to put ourselves in a position where we have the time and the resources to, to get a good product out there for you to work with, I think it's in our, all of our best interest to do so. And I'm not trying to slow things down unnecessarily, but I think it's really important that we get a quality product, not just get something through. And if it takes a little more time, I think it's worth it. So I'd, I'd like for you to consider that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Do you want to start by addressing some of the issues Scott brought up? You want to talk about the proposed? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment. I was, as Commissioner, as Chair Teft was, could attest, I was at the workshop, as was he, and I thought it was really, was a good turnout of various viewpoints. And I think if the, you know, just as matter of process, I think in the future, it seemed like people were stumbling over what was actually the product that they were evaluating more than, you know, they all had their opinions, but they weren't sure how to express them to what point. So I think in the future, Scott, if we could maybe do a quick synopsis upfront of what's there and what we, the work that we've done, that we've painstakingly gone through, and then that would give, and then go through, like on a point-by-point basis like we have done, if, in fact, more quickly or have somebody be able to, you know, do that synopsis and maybe write their comment or do a dot on an individual page, and then that way the community could go through the process a little bit quicker and a little more cohesively, because I think it did break down a little bit, and people were floundering with trying to grasp all of the concepts that we've put forward, and I think, and that was what I, my impression of some of it, so. But I thought everybody, you know, it was amazing to see the differing viewpoints actually communicating and expressing themselves civilly, which was nice.
Okay. Well, let's deal with some of the, let's deal with Scott's questions first, because I think that gives us an idea of where we're going to go. Solar access.
I'll say something on solar. I, in a nutshell, I think it should be limited to the roof. Some of the lots in, like where I live in North Moro Bay, I think we would, we would cause a lot of limitations and more strife, in my opinion.
I believe when we were, if I remember correctly, the discussion was that as we review plans, our plans that are brought forward, that they would also have roof lines designed for solar access, but not, and the houses should not block other peoples being able to put solar on their homes. And I think that was where I thought we were going on the guideline.
That would speak to roof orientation as well as to impact on adjoining properties.
I don't think it ever hurts to make people aware that your building isn't just an object. It has all these other things happening. I don't have any trouble saying level-one considerations, that you don't take away someone's access for solar. And then there's another level of just courteous consideration of the impact of your house on all the people around you. I don't think we're ever going to get a shadow ordinance on groundscape or things like that. That's, seems to be difficult. But the idea that we've suggested in the past with some of the projects is just a simple change of a roof element that actually makes sense in terms of construction sometimes, makes a difference in someone's enjoyment of sun and shade. It's just a natural thing to be cognizant of.
So it sounds like there's pretty general support for including that.
Oh, sorry. Didn't you speak?
No. As you know, I've already spoken too much tonight.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm able to speak up. No, I think in the guidelines, we need to limit it towards solar access for rooftop panels. But I would also like to see if we could is to include a solar-ready provision, and if we go into a green, you know, a green component of these guidelines to encourage gray water and gray water systems, rain catchment, and solar-ready. I think that's a component, you know, with the drought and, what is it, AB 192 or whatever it is for greenhouse gases, you know, I think this is, pardon? 132? Thank you. That's something that we should encourage, and I think the guidelines is a great place to do that, because it's not an ordinance, it's an encouragement.
So maybe what we need is not a solar access system, but maybe an environmental system, section, to include the gray water.
I've actually seen a couple of those in some of the guidelines. I mean, I'm now up to about 23 sets of guidelines that I'm looking at. People are really generous. They see them, and they send it to me all the time, so I don't know, you know, so I keep getting new ones, and then you look through, I always kind of look through to see the policies that I haven't seen in the other ones, you know? So you tick through, and you're like, oh, okay, you know? So I've seen some things that are like that, I'll see what I can come up with.
I think we ought to keep reminding, we're really not charging fees that represent the user components of any of our structures. And I'd always be an advocate of, we ought to reduce the permit costs from what they ought to be if people do things that get them off the public utilities. And if they don't get off the public utilities, we shouldn't be subsidizing anything they do, because I think our permits are still way too low for what they cost us to provide this infrastructure, as we'll see with the wastewater plant.
I suspect a lot of this will end up in the zoning ordinance eventually, but this is good to have for now.
I agree. I think a lot of it will end up there. I think that's the idea, and then it's nice to actually put some of it in place now so we can see, you get to test drive it a little bit. That's probably one of the best things about this, is it's, we're not married to it, but we get to check it out for a little bit, date it a little bit, and see if we like it. And then if we do, it gets to go into the, you know, maybe it gets to become permanent, right?
What about the hillside provision?
Okay.
I'm not going to forget you.
I'm totally against them. I think, I think we're, building on the hillsides is incredibly expensive the way it is, and any further reduction in allowable square footage, especially in the optimal area of the upper stories or upper story, it just drives your cost through the roof and drives housing through the roof, and eliminates, you know, the reason why you bought a hillside lot to begin with.
The only thing I'd say about that is I think we can make recommendations without requiring things. You know, if I build up off of my rear setback, and then I've got the view side on that rear yard, and then I choose to pull the top level back in order to get an exterior access onto a deck, I've moved that upper level back, whatever, six feet, eight feet, whatever, and that changes the appearance of the house downhill. And then if I slope that roof back, instead of putting a gable on top of it, I've reduced it even further in terms of its mass. I haven't taken away any of the footprint desirability of it. It's just basically saying, if you've got a choice to have a deck that's covered with a gable on it versus uncovered and a slope roof back, I haven't changed the square footage of anything, but I've radically changed the mass that's exposed to the downhill folk. And that's just a, that's just a basic geometric thing. I agree, we shouldn't be limiting anything, but I think there's recommendations that if you don't bring them out, people don't think about them. You know, the idea that you buy a wonderful lot and put a generic house plan on it without thinking about these things is astonishing, but that's still happening here.
Yeah, I agree with Michael. We have to put that in the forefront for people to think, especially on hillside lots with the, what, the pulse that, I didn't go to the workshop, but I've talked to several people that did, and the pulse that I hear is the mass and scale. And on hillside lights, we have an opportunity, hillside lots, we have an opportunity just with some guidelines and recommendation to help address that issue.
I agree with both Commissioner Lucas and Richard also. I believe when we talked about it two weeks ago, there was, if I remember correctly, general consensus that we should at least have some guidelines on reducing the appearance of bulk, and also take into consideration privacy for the downslope lots.
Well, the other thing that occurs to me is that hillsides are, to some extent, public views as well as, you know, if you look at the city of San Luis, for example, they don't build on the hillsides in order to preserve the public environment there, the public views. They've been very aggressive in establishing a green belt around the town, and, you know, if you look up in the hills there in San Luis Obispo, you don't see houses. If you look up in some of the hills here, you see very, very tall, you know? So I think there's some public interest in looking at this, as well as community, you know, sort of community compatibility interest. But I think at this stage of the game, we're going to have to be fairly general, because I really, really think that to have any, to do it right, this is one of the ones that's going to have to be neighborhood by neighborhood, because most of Moro Bay is on hills, you know? And the hills at one end of town may be very different than the hills from the other end of town, and from the hills near the beach may be very different from the hills. So I think to really, to do anything that's prescriptive, that has numbers in it or is particularly strong, it's going to have to, that's going to have to be neighborhood by neighborhood.
I think this is, this is another reason why the urgency and the priority of a general planned LCP, I think that the active movement in that direction in a efficient manner is going to help not only define this, but help the community as a whole. And I think this is what I feel that we need to keep stressing and moving in that direction.
I see this as a backlash item, where it's going to, you're, you know, my whole concept on this is we're trying to create good design, or we're not trying to penalize people. In hillside development, hillside restrictions on lots, you're penalizing people. And when you buy, you know, when you buy a house on a hillside, be it the top or the middle or the bottom, you should be aware that you're at the top, the middle, at the bottom, and your price, and the price reflects that. Now, the house should be designed well on any of those locations, and that's what I'm for. And I'm, but you're paying for your location on that hillside. And so when you, when we start getting into restricting the people that paid more for their lots because somebody bought further down, that's the conundrum I have a real problem with.
What I hear Michael saying, I mean, you're right, but I mean, but that's no different than on flatland. I mean, in other words, there's good design and poor design for flatland, and I don't think, I think what we're trying to get to, and maybe we don't, maybe I don't have the expertise to know what it is, but I think what we're trying to get to is guidelines that will say, when you're on a hill, use good design, not to penalize people, you know? You know, when you're at the bottom of the hill, use good design, too.
I'm happy with that wording.
And take into consideration this, and this, and this, and this.
The neighborhood.
Yeah.
Which is what we're saying, which is basically what these guidelines are saying for every house, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's just the, there's, there seems to be a lot more inferred and a lot more, a lot more effects on the hillside because the costs are so much higher, you know, to build. And, you know, you've got foundation costs that need to be spread out, you know? On a flat lot, your foundation costs are spread out between two stories, and they're, you know, they're a small, much, much, much smaller percentage, you know, of the building costs. When you're doing hillsides, you've got a lot more excavation, you've got a lot more labor costs, you just have, and when you start getting into the, restricting the advantages of way, of the hillsides by restricting what you can do on them, then I think you're going to get, I think you're going to get more and more effect, more and more backlash coming through. So build it with good design and appropriate design, and I'm all for that. I'm all for that kind of.
But if we don't articulate what those things are, though, we'll get the same thing over and over again. That's what absolutely frustrates me, is how could somebody spend so much money on putting a thin veneer of stone on the front and totally ignore 90% of the advantages of the lot that they have? Or, you know, look at this project we had in the Embarcadero tonight, the difference between seven years of thinking and massive improvement. Why? Because the expectations maybe have changed. We're just not going to keep building the same thing. And so to me, it's, I don't want to see anybody restricted, I want to see people do things more intelligently. It's beyond my capability to understand people's understanding of function when I see what comes through here and what gets built. They're not functional at all. They're illusions, and the real things that are here aren't paid attention to. And the house 20 years from now is not going to be like what we see today, and the seeds of those things are already being planted, and these things are going to have to perform much more. And we're going to actually ask all these things to do much more work than we do today. It's very sloppy what gets done today. And I think these are just the beginnings of asking people to take more into account than just this fashionable thing that's in front of them, that they've seen from somewhere else. Build it for here, on that lot, with that orientation, with that hillside, the right way, and that's all it really takes. I don't think many of these things are suffering from anything other than the lack of thought put into the construction and the design. I don't think we have the expectations high enough. It's not restriction, I think it's expectation.
I don't know how you put that on paper.
I do, I do, I think I can probably come back with something. Like I was saying earlier, I have several different now, I mean, 20-something copies of design guidelines. So before, when I, you know, when I was working off about 12 of them, you know, I had probably three or four of them that had hillside regulations in them. They're all very similar. I've gotten some now that are a little bit different, so I would mind trying to craft something, bring it back to you, kind of based on all what you said, and take a look at it. I mean, let's see if I can put something in front of you, and then we can work on it. I think that's probably a good idea. I mean, I've heard what you've said, and I've seen some that have a little more, a little more of the flexibility in it, that we might be able to pull some, you know, work something out with it, so let's give that a shot.
Scott, can we get this in process and get this, you know, get this document out there, and then in three months, take another look at it? You know, see what kind of feedback do we have? Do we have to wait the full year? Or can we change course?
I think this thing is probably going to be a little bit of a living document, because we'll probably get things that aren't picked up, you know, that we run across, that we want to address or something like that. I could see it evolving that way. So, and yes, we could revisit it. I mean, that's up to the I mean, that's up to the commission. We certainly could do that earlier than a year. I mean, I'll say this, I mean, when I first, when I first implemented the design guidelines, this is probably, you know, worth discussing, I guess. When I first implemented design guidelines, we did it when I was in Pismo. There was just a list. There was no pictures. There was nothing. It was a list, it was 12 items, I think, maybe 10. And it just described articulation, upper floor setbacks. And it was just, it was almost like a bullet point list, and they were, you know, about a sentence each. And we went from having nothing and having a lot of the problems that we're having now. We implemented those things. It addressed 80% of the issues with a list. So, I mean, that was, it was, just having that was the tool that allowed us, you know, to address a lot of the problems that we see here today. Ours is far more than that and gives you ideas and pictures and things like that about what we expect. It'll be a very valuable tool once we're able to use it. Because it goes much further than what I had the first time I did this. And, and it was, it was a kind of a monumental change for us and gave us something to, you know, push back projects against that we were getting a lot of the more massive homes, people maxing out the developmental box, that type of thing, so.
I think the pictures, the illustrations might be real helpful on the hillside section too because that's a place where it's a little harder to visualize.
I absolutely agree with that.
Okay, shall we go through, does any, shall we go through like specific suggestions and changes or? Yeah, but I don't want to start. You guys start.
Can I ask one thing about the meeting? You know, there was a, there was a concern about correct size. Was there any discussion even as part of this? I'm not remembering any. At one point, the city council had a, had a clause, if your, if your building was over a certain square footage, you came here.
2,500 square feet.
Yeah, and that was just for the living space, not including the garage.
I believe that's the way that it was set up, yeah. You know, they renewed it once, I think, and then eventually it sunset, and so it went away.
Is it, was there any, do you get a sense that there's any value in that?
Well, you ask an interesting question. The next item on the agenda talks about noticing and increasing notification requirements. And some of the cutoffs I put in there were 2,500 square feet of home size to go and do these extra efforts from a notification standpoint. Like I mentioned earlier, I start getting a little concerned when I get 2,500 square foot of living area and then your 400 square foot garage. I'm pushing the 3,000-foot envelope. And so I want to really make sure that the thing's, you know, designed, laid out, and is well accommodated on the lot. Sometimes it's fine, you don't even notice it if it's designed correctly. It's when it's not designed correctly that you really notice it. And when you start getting into square footages that are over 3,000, kind of typically.
I guess the only reason I raise that question is by the time someone puts in for a permit or something at that kind of square footage, and then someone would contest it, so much money has been spent on it that if we automatically said, "Concept plan, X square footage", and not get into the depth that some of these things have been taken before they were questioned.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. Here's the problem, you know, I have a limited amount of staff time available to throw at these things. But, I mean, we are packed, I mean, Cindy, she's sitting here, she probably has 20 projects in the queue. That's just on the planning side of things. That doesn't account for all of the stuff that's already been approved that she has to review on the building side. That's just current planning projects working their way through the project, process. Joan, the same way, she has fewer, but she has 10 or 12 of them, as does Whitney. So if you do that, that means I have that many more projects that are going to have to go to planning commission. Things that go to planning commission take a long time. There's a staff report that has to be written, has to be reviewed. And so it bogs down the system and creates delays. So much so that we run into Permit Streamlining Act issues about getting things through the approval process in a timely manner. I mean, you're seeing your agendas full right now for a reason. You're going to get a little break next time. We don't have a bunch of items on the agenda just because of how some things have worked out from getting information back from the applicant. But even some of the things I talk about in improving noticing and increasing that pushes things out further too. So there's, there's a give and take there, and there's a concern I have with placing more items on the planning commission agenda. I mean, I'm trying to work things out right now. We're streamlining processes so we can reduce some of the turnaround times that would extend it. Not to say it's a bad thing, I just say that's what, that's what potentially happened. I mean, we only have so much capacity.
Just hire four more planners.
I don't have more planners in my budget, and it's, we're talking about that tomorrow night, so.
So, specific issues? You want to go to, you want to go to these? You want to go to my suggestions, or you have?
I think we should discuss yours.
Okay, okay. There's two, there's two of them. The first one, let's talk about the garage thing first. One of the things that, one of the things that, one of the comments that was made at the workshop was that the garage, the section on garages sounded mandatory. In other words, it sounded like you have to do these things. And I know we didn't intend that, but when I read through it, it kind of read that way to me. So I just, this is a suggestion to soften up that first paragraph a little bit so that people understand that they don't have to do all of those things.
I don't have a problem with that, with that paragraph change.
I think the, I think the way it reads now, it says, "Shall incorporate one of the," you know, right. One or more of the following, so. And then the other question I had with the garages is, should we tell people that if a double car garage just doesn't work out very well for them, that they can request a parking exception? Should that be in the guidelines? I mean.
This is one of those things, I think, area by area. Like the one we saw tonight, I would have, hate to have seen that turn into a, you know, a two-car garage if they had done something else. I mean, that's, that was a wonderful little project that, I think in some ways, we had one a couple sessions ago where someone asked for an exception. And it's a matter of, if they'd built a garage for it, it would have been that much more massive of a project. So in some of these neighborhoods, I think it makes sense to not necessarily provide parking all the time. You don't want to get into a situation where you're building granny units and exempting parking and things and parking on the street then. To me, anything we can do to get a car off the streets is what really keeps the neighborhoods looking good. But then whether they're housed in a building room, I think is much more an open topic.
But it doesn't say they'll get an exception, it just says they can request one. I mean, that's, it does come to, it does come to us. I don't know, I just think, I just think letting people know that there is an option by which they do not have to build a two-car garage is maybe not a, not a bad thing to do.
Scott, how, how do people currently know that they can go for an exception?
We tell them, I mean, like the example that you had today with the, you know, kind of Spanish little bungalow thing. I mean, we're like, you need to get a parking exception. You know, we were never pushing like, oh, you need to build a two-car garage. That made no sense on that lot. I mean, we were like, you, this is the one, these are the ones that we want. You apply for your parking exception, it makes sense, you're not doing anything crazy. You're adding a very small amount of square footage, in fact. And then, yeah, the garage, like they said, was falling down, so, I mean, they needed to do something with it. But, so we encouraged them. We said, yeah, you should pursue this. I mean, when the planner walked up there and talked to them and they came in, we said, yeah, you need to, you should go down this road. This makes perfect sense for your situation. It's why we have parking exceptions. Basically, it was a prime example. And we do that with a lot of them. We don't do them for all of them. We see problems that we say, no, well, you're going to have to provide your parking in this instance. But a lot of them, you know, it doesn't work, and so you see the parking exceptions fairly frequently. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost kind of odd when you get that non-conforming house that we're expanding and it doesn't require a parking exception, you know. It's kind of the, not the norm.
I would be afraid that they would, if you would put it in here, that there would be an assumption that it would be approved. And it just, when it's written down, then people would say, well, it's right here in your guidelines that, and they're not going to read the may, may be approved. And I would read it the same way. Oh, I won't have to, you know, I can get a parking exception. So I would really prefer it to be handled the way it currently is handled on a case-by-case basis as opposed to putting it in here.
Yeah, I honestly don't feel strongly one way or the other. I just thought it was a question that should be considered.
Well, and you guys regularly, we regularly see them. I mean, you get, we get quite a few of these things, so certainly worth discussing.
Catherine, good point. I agree with you on that.
I think we have a consensus not to, not to do that. And then the other one was going back to the sticking point that we had last time, which was the scale and mass thing. You know, I just think, I think the point, I think there's two points that have to be made that aren't made currently, and that is number, if you're talking about compatibility, don't pick out the five biggest houses within a quarter of a mile and use those as examples. And number two, there is the possibility if the house is just too big, you know. And so I tried to, the red, the blue is what I brought forward last time, and the red represents the changed text. It's shorter.
I'm fine with the changes.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that you did, Dr. Teft, and I think it's, I like the change.
Yeah, I'll go along with this. It's, you know, it's not as, it doesn't feel as punitive to me as the other one did.
Okay, yeah.
Michael's got a problem with it.
I'm the closet modernist that loves new things. And I don't think design necessarily has to look like everything else around, but it's a mass and scale thing to me more than it is. So it's the, it says pattern of perceived scale and mass. Okay, I can go with that.
I took, yeah, I took out the fit seamless, integrate seamlessly, just for you. I had a couple more specific issues to bring up. There's, there's a, see if I can, I got to find two different things here. There is, there's still a spelling error. On the driveway section, it says, it's under 4C.
Yeah, I found that already. I fixed it, yeah.
Okay, okay. But the issue I had was, okay, there seems to be a contradiction, Scott. And maybe we just need to be more clear about what we're talking about. The, okay. In the section on building materials, F, the introductory paragraph, the second sentence says, "Changes in materials or colors should not occur on the same wall plane." But if you go back and look at C2, section C, item 2, it says, "Changes within wall, within the wall planes, wall and roof planes can also be achieved through the use of various textures and materials." So, and there's, the example there seems to show like stone and shingles on the same wall plane. So I just, I think that's going to confuse somebody. It's confusing me.
Yeah, gotcha.
I'm just wondering if that, that second sentence should just, we could just take it out.
You mean the changes in materials or color should not occur on the same wall plane?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it, the example is actually showing that the materials are changing on the same wall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then.
So what were you suggesting to take out? I'm sorry.
Just that, yeah, section F in the introductory paragraph, that second sentence that says, "Changes in material or color should not occur on the same wall plane."
F on the, okay, hold on a second here. Okay, all right.
And then the other, the other thing is on the tree sections, 5 point, well, I think it's 6, maybe 6. It's on the last page, the first section. I think, I think there's a, some cut and paste thing going on there. But also, it says, "In view sensitive areas, trees should either be maintained at a height not to exceed the maximum height of the zone districts, or trees should be chosen that do not exceed, a mature height that exceeds the maximum height of the zone district." I think what that means is, when it says the maximum height of the zone district, I think that means the maximum roof height. Is that correct? Okay, because we just need to put that in to be clear, that it's the roof height, the maximum building height, or, because we got an email, and the guy said, "What's the maximum tree height?" And this kind of could be read as, there's a maximum tree height in each district. And there was an email where the guy said, "What's the maximum tree height in my district?", you know.
It's 6.5. That sentence doesn't read right.
Yeah, the should be is.
Yeah, should be, shouldn't, shouldn't be crossed out.
Right.
Which one?
The next one.
Somebody got carried away. And then the next, the next point down, that one doesn't make sense after the crossouts. It just goes, "Mature landscaping where possible, paying special attention to the preservation of mature, healthy trees."
I don't know, what happened with this?
Oh, it should be preserved.
Yeah, or it should say, "Should be preserved" in order to keep the same grammar. Mature landscaping should be preserved where possible.
Scott, I know that we've looked at this an awful lot, but would you reread it once? Just making sure all the tenses are correct, because there's utilizing, utilize.
I've noticed that too. I have a note, I was kind of, a couple of folks mentioned it at the workshop and went through and realized there's a few of those too. So I have a list.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, and then in the landscaping, once again, it says, "Landscape plans associated with submittals for new family homes should incorporate the following." But it doesn't really say that landscape plans are required.
They're not.
They're not.
Yeah, our ordinance doesn't require them for all projects. But when we get them, there's things we want to see. And then there, in some areas, they are, for most areas, they're not.
Are we trying to require them, or do we just encourage them?
It's, I mean, we're not even doing that really, just saying when they're submitted, they should pay attention to this. Because we don't always get them, and we don't have any, there's no means right now in the ordinance to require them in most residential areas.
So that has to be an ordinance item to require that? It's not like you require a site. a site plan in the ordinance, do you, or?
That's a submittal checklist thing.
Yeah. So could it be, could it just be included on the submittal checklist?
Well, the interesting thing is, we don't, I mean, I don't know, we don't have landscapes standards. I mean, you have to have a landscape plan. Okay, I mean, I guess, I mean, some of these things are a little bit of that, but I mean, that's not, that's not everything. So, you started getting down that road, and that's a, that's a, maybe you need to think about that some, because if you start requiring things like that, then that's like a development standard you'd want to have in the zoning code, you know, so people are aware of it. Referencing it in here is fine, but, you know, I'm a little...
But we still can talk about things on site plans. I mean, we've got, we've got issues with, you know, permeable paving in inappropriate parts of town. We've got, you know, things about drought-resistant plants. I mean, those things are guidelines, whether we require a landscape plan or not.
Why are we tying this, why are we tying these ideas to a landscape plan? Why doesn't it just say residential landscaping should include?
You could do that.
Because, number one, residential landscaping changes all the time. There's not a plant on my lot that hadn't been moved a couple of times, or replaced a couple of times.
But we're asking to see these, too. I mean, so we, you know, we can't review this unless we have a plan, a landscape plan.
Right, and maybe eventually we will.
And it's just a starting, it's just a starting point to begin with anyways.
I mean, I think, my personal opinion is, at some point down the road, it should be incorporated into the zoning code, and we should have a requirement for it. I mean, in fact, there are state mandated landscape requirements for larger projects. If you don't have a landscaping ordinance, tough, the state adopted one for you. It just doesn't apply to, you know, most of the stuff we have in town related to single-family homes.
Okay. Anything further on the design guidelines? No? So, what do you think?
Break, quick break?
We have the public noticing requirements.
You can continue to the next meeting if you want. We don't have anything much on the agenda, other than I was gonna bring the design guideline stuff back. We can take that, then, if you want, or we can go through it right now.
Did we want to discuss whether there's another workshops appropriate? Does that not work with the kind of plan timeframe you've got?
The plan timeframe that I have was kind of set by the council, although it's gonna be extended at this point, because we're not gonna be able to get back to council till, at the earliest, the last meeting in June. And that, depending on where we're at with some of the stuff we're doing budget-wise, may not work either, so there may be...
Two members of the commission were at that meeting, and I'd be interested in hearing your feelings on if another meeting should take, is necessary, or warranted, or not.
Well, I, I, my feeling on the workshop was, it wasn't, I mean, not to be critical, because it was, I think it was very good activity, but it wasn't very linear. It didn't go from here to there. So, I don't know, if we have another one, I don't know, I don't know how much further it will get, you know, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to it, you know. I, it's, unfortunately, it would be Scott's job to design it, and a lot's gonna depend on the way it's designed.
I was under, I'm, you know, I'm under the impression that I think we need to get these out there, and this is gonna be a living, working document, and another workshop, I would rather, I would rather see more people come to the planning commission, and a more variety of people come to the planning commission and express their views on individual items. I just, I don't think we're gonna get where we need to go with just one more workshop.
Yeah, what I think would be valuable would be, hold a public workshop in six months after they go out, or something like that, nine months after they go, because I think, I honestly think the public is in the same position as we are right now, which is, you know, we've got ideas, you know, we'll get them on paper, we'll get them out there, but the, to me, the rubber's gonna hit the road when we see how they're working in real life. Now, you say, you say that our next agenda is fairly light?
Yeah, the, I mean, the only thing that I was gonna bring back on it was gonna be the design guidelines. Now, we don't have any projects on it, because we had a couple just fall off, so. I was gonna bring this back, and...
I don't know, we could sort of make an effort to get that public input period to be kind of about the guidelines. I wonder if that would be, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, I mean, that would be from the starting of the meeting, so you're, we're not doing it at 10:30 at night. I mean, I'm not gonna fault anyone for not wanting to show up and talk about this now, at this time at night, I mean. But it would be, you know, from the, from the get-go. I could, I mean, certainly, put it all, put it all, put it all together, and we could talk about all the policies that way, and I'll put it all in the PowerPoint presentation, so we can put it up on the screen. We can go over it all that way, including the changes that, you know, that came out at today's meeting. I mean, we can do all that. I mean, that's straightforward.
Scott, would we be able to make the meeting such that we would go through a section, open it up for public comment, take it under consideration, close public comment on that section, go to the next section, and do it that way?
It's why I was talking about having it all, putting it all back into the PowerPoint, so all the policies are in there, including all of the exhibits, so you can see it all. And so, we could go, like you said, go through it one by one, and do it that way. Yeah, I mean, that's, I could do that, certainly.
I think that would be much more beneficial than another public, public meeting.
I think that'd be real focus.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's do that.
I'm in support.
Okay.
Okay.
So what's your pleasure? Do we want to tackle these tonight? The notification? Do we have energy? Pardon? It's, I'm sorry, it's item number D1.
Just site posting.
The site posting requirements.
Sure.
Okay, we'll power through.
Can I get the other?
Okay, so we...
My staff report has two of the same cover pages, and not the one for this. Okay. So, what we're talking about is increasing public noticing awareness and, to the public, and this was something that was directed by the city council at their April 14 meeting, when we talked about the design guidelines, and the request for the moratorium, and all those types of things. One of the things that came out of that, they talked about was, you know, having a, sitting down with the planning commission and discussing options for improving, increasing public notice. So, that's what this is about. The typical notice for a public hearing item, we have a notice, we place the notice in the legal section of the Tribune 10 days prior to the hearing. We do send out postcard notices to all owners and occupants within 300 feet of the project site, 10 days prior to the hearing. The site is posted 10 days prior to the hearing, and we post it with an 11 by 17 notice on a stake out in the front of the property, which typically includes a project description, usually the description that we send to the paper, so it's the same, so everybody understands that when they get the postcard, it's the same thing that's at the front, that's, you know, that's being noticed by the sign. Has the project number, applicant's site plan, and then oftentimes, there's a site plan and a, and a project elevation. This is an example of the one that we had for earlier today. That's what it looks like. You have the description on the left-hand side, and then the plan's on the right-hand side, and it's usually sealed in plastic that flops around like this in the wind. But certainly, you can see the text is pretty small. The options that have been discussed for improving notice would be to increase the mailing radius from 300 to 500. You'd certainly get a lot more folks with that. Maybe increase the noticing lead time. Right now, we do 10 days. That's kind of a common theme that we hear, is that, well, we didn't have enough time, we didn't know, and so, if you increase the lead time for maybe 10 days to 15 days, you know, both for the postcards and the site posting, that that would get the notice out there a little bit ahead of time. And then increase the size of the sign from the sign, from the 11 by 17 to maybe 18 by 24. And then one of the interesting things that's come up, that's out there a little bit, is, that I've seen out there a little bit, is require pre-application outreach on the part of an applicant for maybe certain types of projects. So, extending the mailing notice to 500 feet, the question here would be for all, for all projects that we work on, both administratively, and ones that go to planning commission, just ones that go to planning commission, for all commercial projects, maybe just for projects that are proposing the addition of a second story, or maybe projects that are gonna exceed 2,500 square feet in size. The noticing timeframe issue, increasing it from 10 to 15 days, that would probably increase the likelihood that we'd, that the neighbors would become aware of the project. The only negative to that would be, the extending the notification period will serve to push projects back a little bit, typically from how we review them, and they're ready to go. Once they're ready to go, then we do the noticing. We don't notice it beforehand, so that adds five days to that. The 18 to 24 sign notification, the idea would be to use one of these things I have behind me. These are from our public works department, scooping the poop. I thought this was a good one to bring, I don't know. Anyway, so you can see, bright colored sign, it's corrugated plastic, so it's stiff. They have, these are the things you mount them on, so, you know, and I think that some total of this is 16, 17 bucks. So, we would probably come up with, you know, a format on here that could be filled in. We would order them, the city would order them, and hand them out to the applicants, part of their application if you would pay for this, and either, or potentially, city staff could post them, too. It just kind of depends on how we do it. I've seen it both ways, where applicants are required to post them, or where city staff does. Maybe it makes a lot of sense to continue to have city staff do it, then we know that it's getting done, and we don't have to do like a posting affidavit, and have to give that back to us. That's kind of cumbersome. So, maybe it's better to keep it with staff doing it. Think about it a little bit more. Yeah, like I said, it would include fillable fields, that you could, we could write in the project number, and those types of things on the front of it, all the applicable stuff, but it would have, like, it would be like a form type thing. You see where I put the, included a posting affidavit? That would be if we had the applicant do it, but I think it's probably a better idea to have staff post.
So, is that an addition to the 11 by 17, or is the 11 by 17 adhered to the back of this thing, or how does that work?
Well, the idea would be that we would get away, we would go away from that, and we would go, again, to something like that, that has, it'll, it says, you know, "Project under review." There's an, here, I have an example of one. So, this is for the city of Santa Barbara. That's what theirs look like, is bright yellow. Notice of development, so people know that it's going on. My thought was to, because you can get printable QR codes and stick them on there, so we, I mean, we require electronic sets of plans, so if we put the QR code on there, just a link, I mean, you can sit your phone on there, and here you go, and then you can get the plans that way, or you can come down and see them, obviously. But something like that with the bright color, I think everybody would see that. If it was that big, I don't think anybody would be telling us they missed it seeing it. Right?
The only thing I'd say for analog people, or dog walkers, is I typically, if you see a sign, and then you've got the immediate thing, you know, one side of that's got printed and gets, and the other side gets the little image tacked on to it, that you can kind of see right away whether you want to think about doing anything more or not.
We can, you know, I haven't checked, but I think I did see, what happens is, our public works department orders these things, and so you can order them, and I remembered seeing one of them, that it's got a, you can have something on the front, and on the backside, it had like a plastic pocket that you could put something in. So, I guess we could put a note on the front that looks, he plans on the back, maybe, and then, the question is, then, how do we post them on the site? Do you want to post them like perpendicular, then, maybe, to the street, as opposed to facing out?
No, just post them that way, and if it says plans on the back...
I mean, sometimes you're posting up against something, so you would be able to see behind it. That was the only point that I was thinking, so I was trying to...
So, Scott, what about, was brought up also, like, for sale sign, you know, what do they call them? Can't leave your signs, or?
It has, that's a lot more expensive, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I would think what did, you would have, you would have one of those with this hanging there, and then you could post the, you could staple the plans to the bottom of it.
You mean, then you have to have someone install it that way. I mean, I just, this is, I mean, this is, you could push it in with your foot, you know, I mean, and it's, it's solid. The good thing is, it doesn't, it won't get lost, and it's not that floppy thing, so it blows off, and then it's gone, you know, I mean, because that happens sometimes, and we get complaints about it. This thing's not going anywhere, you know, unless someone takes it. And, like I said...
I think it is nice to have a set of plans on there, so even, even if it's tacked on to the bottom of this sign or something.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, you know, if you just changed the size, I mean, you want to, I think you want to keep the notice of development piece big, so people know what the heck's going on. The rest of it could be small, like you saw there with the plan, so that would, I mean, that could work, I think. I think that would probably work pretty well. So, yeah, we could do something along those lines, yeah. Anyway, so that was one of the ideas. This seemed like a, kind of an easy thing to do, and, you know, after I found out how much they were, I was like, well, it's not a lot of money, so. The last item was the pre-application outreach, and this would be something where you have the applicant, you know, contacting the neighbors before they submitted their application. You know, the question is, what do you, you know, and do you pick a radius that they would contact the neighbors in, to see if they wanted to meet with them, to see their plans? You know, the question is, do you make something like that mandatory? Do you make it optional? Do you just encourage it? And then, what does it apply to, again, that same thing? Does it apply to all projects, two-story projects, projects 2,500 square feet and above?
Could we just have a contact number on the, on the noticing, where they could have a contact number, say you mail out to 300, 300, you know, within 300 feet, and then just on the noticing, have a contact number that somebody who's interested can contact the applicant?
That's the way this is done.
Okay.
You see the number there? That's not the city. The city's number's down at the bottom. So, that's how this, that's how I kind of envisioned it, where you'd have the applicant's name in the contact, so you know who's doing it. So, yeah, that is, I mean, certainly, that's, that information would be on the sign.
Do we have people that might object to having that number public like that? Do we have a public, is it public on the permits application?
Yes, you could come in and look at the application, doesn't matter. Yeah, it's all public, once you submit it to us. It's all out there for everybody to see, minus the, minus the archaeological reports. Those are, those are private. You don't get to look at those. But, so, so, comments?
Well, we have one, we have a member of the public that's hanging in here with us, so why don't we take public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Teft, thank you. Ted Demont, Morro Bay. I think the 500-foot radius is an excellent idea, and the plastic signs are also an excellent idea. Anything you can do to, to bring more people into awareness of what's going on is helpful. I mean, it really is. I go right back to 1,000 Ridgway. My wife and I live on Estero, probably a quarter of a mile away from the actual project of 1,000 Ridgway. We were the people who filed the appeal. We don't live anywhere near there, but if we hadn't been walking by, saw the sign, it wouldn't have, the appeal would never have happened. The immediate neighbors weren't aware of it. The immediate neighbors weren't aware of it. Why? I don't know, probably because they couldn't see the sign, or they weren't home, or whatever. But it wasn't something that was made aware to them in a way that, that, that was helpful, at least in a timely fashion. So, whatever we can do to enhance awareness, I think those signs are great. I mean, it's not going to blow away, and it's clear, it's clear as day that there's something going on. And the 500-foot, the extra 200 feet in every direction is really helpful, you know, because 300 feet isn't very far. I mean, it's two or three houses, particularly if you go across, across, you know, a side street or something like that, it's not very far. So, you know, enhancing it just a little bit will make a big difference. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I like the sign, the yellow, those signs, I've used those before. And then, as far as the pre-application outreach, I think it's something that, I don't want to start legislating people to try to be friends, you know, I just, encourage them to do that. And then, the, I had something else on here. Getting late, sorry, I missed my note, but generally, that's, oh, the 500 feet, yeah, the 500 feet is good as well.
Scott, I feel that we should extend the mailing notice to 500 square feet for all projects. And then I'm very much supportive of the larger sign that you showed us, similar to the Santa Barbara sign, but adding the plans on the back. And on, and I believe that will suffice for, you know, pre-application notice, that people can actually call their neighbor if they need to.
Sorry, let me interject. I remembered what I, what I was going to say. I think that the 10 days is plenty, because I think that if we start going with the signs, I think it's going to take, take that into account, but that if you start going too many days, it's going to start backlogging as well. So, I think that, that the 10 days is okay.
I tend to think the 10 days is okay if you've got the big sign, because people are going to see it then. And I, and whether, is it 10 working days, or is it 10 calendar days?
10 calendar days.
Okay. Is that, is that enough time? Again, in a way, that doesn't seem like that's very much time at all, really. I thought maybe it was 10 based on, you know, working days.
It's just 10-day, 10-days' notice. We send it to the paper, enough time to get it there, usually on Friday or Saturday, and goes through the entire next week, and then...
I think most people will be extremely happy to see the sign in the larger notice area. I think that's, that's good. I think the time, we can always correct if it doesn't seem to be adequate.
Yeah, I'm fine with the 500, the 500 feet. And then, as far as the sign, I agree that that sign will work. We just, you know, as long as the plans are included on it, having somebody do a QR code, I think, will upset, just confuse a lot of people, you know. And then, I'm almost okay with the 15 days. And then, but as far as the mandatory contact, I think having, maybe stating on the sign that, you know, this is the contact number if you're interested, you know, this is the applicant's phone number, maybe clearly stating that, or this is the contact information for the applicant if you're interested in seeing a more complete set of plans, or wish to, wish to comment, you know?
I'm against mandatory anything with your neighbors at this point. I think at some point, we may find neighborhoods where it may make more sense than others, but I don't think it hurts to have some kind of statement when someone comes in that, you know, we encourage you to get to know your neighbors. Something as simple as that.
I mean, we actually do some of that. When we see some of the bigger homes, that's one of the first questions we ask them, you know, have you spoken to some of your neighbors? Especially after we've gone out there, and you look, and you're like, okay, well, you have a two-story house, there's three houses right behind you, their view corridor is right over the 12-foot tall existing house that's there. We have one of those making its way through the process right now. So, there's, you can, you can foresee problems. It's, like I said, again, you don't need the crystal ball, just go out there and look at it, so...
I would just hate to have it, you know, all projects go through a, you know, a triad of, you know, unelected, you know, representatives of the community.
Well, a couple, I mean, I agree with everyone, the bigger, the brighter the sign, the better. Going out to 500 feet will almost triple the number of people who get notified. It goes from six and a half acres to 18 acres. I'm not sure about the Tribune. I think more people in Morro Bay probably read New Times than Tribune.
New Times is more expensive.
Pardon?
New Times is a lot more expensive to advertise.
Is it really? Huh. Interesting. Yeah, I think, I think the, any kind of mandatory consultation would be really hard. I mean, it'd be 20% of our homeowners here are absentee homeowners. How do you have a conference with somebody who lives in Connecticut, or, you know? You know, and you mentioned Rancho Palos Verdes, but even Rancho Palos Verdes, it's not mandatory. It's encouraged, but it's not, it's not mandatory. The one, the one issue I did want to bring up, though, is we don't, we don't do notification now for administrative permits, and I think that's a big hole. Now, I realize, I realize we can't notice them the same way that we do here.
We post them, sorry.
You post them?
We post, we post.
At the house?
Yeah.
At the house, yeah. I was just thinking, if there's any way to take, and again, I don't want to make a lot of extra work, but I was, I was thinking, is there any way to take the current and advanced planning processing list, okay, and add another section that would be, because I assume these projects move from one section to another as they, you know, as time goes along. So, just have a section that's like, projects approved in the last week, and maybe a place on the city's website where, once a week, you could put that, that list up with just that summary information, so people could go there, go to that site, and say, oh, this has been approved in my neighborhood, you know, let me go to, and within the 10-day appeal period, you know what I'm saying, so that they would have a chance to, you know, if they wanted to file an appeal, they'd have a chance to do it.
That's, I just want to jump in. I think that idea of having the web presence, because then the people, the owners of record are getting a notice, the casual walker who understands the community gets a notice by the sign, and then anybody who's, who wants to virtually watch what's happening can see the flow on the website. And so, you've got multiple ways to make sure these things happen, and the website's free. I mean, basically, you've got to have somebody moving these things in, but if you've got somebody logging things in, it can't be that much more to push things onto a website to publish.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. I think that's a good idea.
And we, you know, and we could, we could even have, we could even make that one of the, you know how you can sign up to be notified of council meetings or planning commission? You could, we could make it, you know, you can sign up to be notified of recently approved projects, and you'd get that PDF file, or whatever it is, just mailed out to you every Monday. So, ladies and gentlemen, I think we are finally to the point of being adjourned. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Planning commission, comments from planning commissioners at this point?
I do have one. This'll only be about a half hour long. No, 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 kidding. I want to notify the public, there's a Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board meeting on the 28th of this month, and on the agenda, there, you can look it up on the log, there's a staff report regarding the Morro Basin drinking water aquifer and the sucralose test that was accomplished. I have quite a bit of experience with regards to this, the whole process, which I'm not going to go into. However, I was a test ops engineer, and I have an understanding on looking at data, and what our staff is required to kind of look to the regional board as guidance. I read the staff report, and if you look at it, I'm trying to be nice about it, but if you look at how the logic that is being taken regarding the issue of the nitrates, if they're coming from fertilizers, or if they're coming from the dilapidated collection system, you look at the logic, and the regional board staff is like, really reaching and not, and trying to force a conclusion. I would highly recommend anybody in the public to read that and go to the meeting. It's over in Erevist by the airport on the 28th, and take, listen to what is being done there. I am very concerned with regards to this issue, and I just encourage the public to just take a closer look on that, on this matter.
What was the date and time?
It's May 28th, and I'm not sure, they usually start the meetings around 9, I think, but you can look on the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board website, and then in the staff report, it talks about the Morro Bay and the sucralose test. So, I appreciate if the public just looked at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Scott, do you have planning commissioner comment, or planning director comment?
You should all congratulate Chair Teff for being appointed to the General Plan Advisory Committee.
Okay, and just, everybody remember to turn your plans back into, Scott, on the waterfront development. So, with that, we are adjourned to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which will be here in the Vets Hall on June the 2nd. Good evening.